This board meeting of May the 24th, 2016 will come to order. At this time, I want to ask Dr. Foster if he would lead us in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing upon the group here assembled today. We ask that you bless our children as they have very few days left in the school year. Guide their activities at the schools, bless the parents, those teachers who have duties every day toward our children, and let us have a safe ending to the school year, lest this meeting is well today. Lord, we ask you and our first responders here and our soldiers abroad, bring them home safely. Help them to protect us. These things, in Christ Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Do I hear a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the last minutes and there's a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, before you move forward with the agenda, can we just ask for a moment of silence for Commissioner CJ Small?
Yes, sir.
And his safe return back to the United States.
As well said. We will take a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crenshaw.
Thank you, Dr. Crenshaw.
Do I hear a motion for the agenda adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. I have, Ms. Peak, any announcements before I make mine here?
We're in the last few days of school, like Dr. Foster said. The students' last day is June the 1st, the teachers' June the 2nd. Professional development has already begun, so we have a busy summer ahead of us and looking forward to finishing all the plans and being ready to go for the 16-17 school year.
My goodness, we're talking 16-17 already.
And another I'll add, we graduated 3,750 students last week. So we saw students walk with diplomas from all 13 of our sites, including Augusta Evans.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to do one recognition report. Actually, it's a sad one that I have to make. We have a board resolution here for a former student of the Mobile County Public School System, and it's a resolution for Ms. Rosetta Gamble Brown. The sad news to report is that Ms. Brown has passed away, and we understand, if my facts are correct, that they are bringing her back to Mobile for her funeral. But she was a pathfinder for civil rights in Mobile and was one of the first African-American students to attend Murphy High School. So I'm going to read this resolution, and then I'm going to give it to our board member here, Mr. Battles, who's a member of the NAACP, so you can give it. Whereas Rosetta Gamble Brown was born on July the 17th, 1947, in Oroville, Alabama, and graduated from Murphy High School, Tuskegee University, and Birmingham Southern College; and whereas she was one of Mobile's first civil rights activists and a crucial part of the integration of Murphy High School; and whereas her goal was to help fight for equal education for all students; and whereas she was loving and a devoted mother, grandmother, sister, and friend; and now therefore I, Mr. Don Stringfellow, President of the Mobile Board of School Commissioners, along with the Superintendent of the Mobile Public School System and the remaining members of the school board, do recognize the outstanding contribution made by Mrs. Rosetta Gamble Brown to the public school system of Mobile County. Authorization to this document requested by Mr. Stringfellow from District 2 on this 24th day of May, 2016. And Mr. Battles, I'm going to give that to you.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to make one comment. She was born in Oroville, Alabama. Well, my pastor Reverend Charles Arthur Thompson was born in Oroville, Alabama, who I've attended Stone Street since I was nine years old. I think I'm about 27 now. So on behalf of the family and the NAACP and the community, we just thank you for this recognition because pathfinders always need to be recognized, and when they're recognized, somebody going to emulate them and follow. So thank you very much. I graduated from the University of South Alabama in the first class in 19... So we were pathfinders at the university in 1966. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Harwell, you have any announcements?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Battles, you have an announcement?
The only announcement that I have is that on Thursday night at Mayne's Middle School, we're going to have a town meeting to discuss with the community about some issues that we feel are very relevant. So that's all I got.
Okay.
It'll start at 6 o'clock, and we're inviting the general public to come in and just to get some comments and input. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Dr. Crenshaw?
No.
Dr. Foster?
No.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to citizens' requests. I have the list here. The first, let me read this off to you. The delegates who speak will have five minutes to make their presentations. The good name and/or character of an individual may not be discussed during an open board meeting. And our superintendent, Ms. Peak, will be keeping the time here. Is the... Mike, is it on right there? Okay. First one I have on the list here is Ms. Kathy Batiste. Ms. Batiste? If you would please, ma'am, come right there. I did pronounce it correct.
You did just fine. Thank you.
I'll pop it.
My name is Kathy Batiste. I'm a representative here from Littleby-Wisdom High School, and I represent the PTA. I stand before you because of some of the things that we have been talking about that's been on the media this morning. That's in reference to Mayne's Middle School merging in with Wisdom High School. We have parents and supporters that are here today who are against this decision-making due to a lot of several reasons. And I do know that I only have five minutes to discuss this, so I just hit on some of the main topics. One of the topics is, is in reference to teenage students mixing in, well, high school students mixing in with middle school students. We have decreased our pregnancy rate at Wisdom High School. We feel that when you merge this school with Wisdom, that will increase. We have done parenting, communication, and education with our students, and once you merge your middle school students in, we're going to have issues with that as well. Social media is the biggest thing here we have. We're afraid that we may increase rape cases due to the fact of older students with younger students. Another thing that we want to talk about is in reference to administration. We, at this point, went through a whole school year with a principal who had to serve as a math teacher for the school system when the school board did not provide us one. So he did double duties, which I commend him on that. However, if you were to blend middle school students in with Wisdom High School, there is nothing on your agenda you have not provided to the public that you will provide us with the best administrative staff that we need. We don't get enough teachers. We don't get qualified, enough qualified teachers, because I receive a letter every year stating a teacher has not met credibility and that you wanted to inform me. Well, then that destroys our parents from sending their children to our school and maintaining them in our school. I have a child there myself. I believe Wisdom High School has provided all three of my girls with the best education that they can get, and they're all graduating from college. The other thing that's on their agenda is the facility. Wisdom High School does not even have a cafeteria that can hold the students that we already have. How are you going to merge middle school students in with Wisdom High, and our facility cannot accommodate them? The other thing is money. There was almost millions of dollars, I think $7.6 million that was allocated to Mayne's Middle School to build that establishment there. So when you closed down Mayne's Middle School, will that money be allocated to Wisdom High School? We had a hard enough time trying to get our sports facility to be upgraded so that we can provide better athletes for our collegiate people who come in to recruit them. Then there's the depopulated building that sits across from the school that we've been fighting with city councilmen and for you all to stand in that is rat-infested, that has caught on fire several times. You put our children in danger when you have this building across the street that has not been torn down. We've signed petitions. We've done everything possible to get you all to tear that building down. Then there's a club, Mingos, sits right on the corner of a school system. You have George Hall down the street. We can't even get you all to stand in to tear that down and get that moved as well. For years, we are now embarking on our 100-year celebration. A school that started in a house in Maysville when blacks were not created equally. So when we started from there and we moved to where we are standing now, every year you all come up with a tactic to destroy the school credibility. Number one, you rezone the school district. The school district was rezoned, we feel, maybe on your agenda differently, was to populate B.C. Rain High School. When you populated B.C. Rain High School, that took our children from our school. Number two, not only have you done that, you have discredited us throughout the years through media. We made the... We was off the bad school list for four years, three to four years. As soon as we made it back on the list, we all over national news. But when Murphy was on the bad list, we heard nothing of it. Not one thing. So what we are asking for, and I do understand I have one minute, what we're asking for is just what you spoke of with the NAACP, is equalality. We want the same thing. We want the same extracurricular that every school has. You took away the drama. You took away, you sought our ban. Dr. Exton told us we couldn't have a ban auxiliary until we got a ban director. We have all this stuff going on that's negative towards our school, but you're not giving us enough to fight with.
Thank you, Ms. Batiste. Next, I have June Jones. Ms. Jones?
Hi, I'm June Jones. I'm a retired math teacher from Chicago. I've come here as a casual observer. I also sit on the Education Committee of the NAACP. I'm a board member of the League of Women Voters, and I have some concerns about the ten failing schools. One thing, being a math teacher from Chicago, I work with inner-city schools, at-risk schools. I have made a coalition plan for the schools where I hope I can meet with some members where we can go over this plan. Right now, it's about 15 pages, so a little bit too long to go into right now. But some of the main points is making the board, making the school system transparent, having more information that is equally accessible to all people without passwords and what have you. Another thing is accountability. Now, what I'm hearing now, some of the things she was talking about was new to me, because again, I'm new to Mobile. But some of that is accountability and transparency that parents should have a voice in. I'm a parent. I represent a lot of mothers. We have the same view. You see, we're going to have equal opportunity for education. We should have that. I came in here observing high schools, and I see kids counting on their fingers. I'm a math teacher. I should not see any 12th grader counting on their fingers. I don't care how many kids you graduate. If they're not qualified, they're simply not qualified. Another thing I have an issue with is having high school people that substitute in high school when they only have a high school diploma. They're not qualified to teach. So that means when a student have a substitute in their classroom, there is no education. You have 180 days for education. Every last one of those days should be used for education. Now, one day should be used as play. I do not see eight playgrounds, meaning these soccer fields, coming up when our children are not being educated. You have thousands of kids being undereducated, but you're worrying about school playgrounds. I don't see that. So I really would like to meet with some of you. It's a very detailed plan for transparency, qualified situations, and we have been working on this for a few days. We have not asked for the meeting yet, but I heard about this meeting this morning on my way to the YMCA. So I had to get here and do what I had to do. But these are things that are needed that will get your schools to actually become not failing schools. It is not something that you can turn around in a couple of years. From my understanding, with talking with the public, that you have turned principles around in two, three years. That is no way in the world you're going to get a school to pass in that little amount of time. You have to change the climate of the school. You have to change the attitude of the school. And let me just say this. I'm not only a high school teacher. My bachelor's was in mathematics. I have a master's in curriculum and instructions and a master's in education and leadership. I'm not a plaything right here. I'm very serious, and this is not just to criticize your system. I saw a system not working. I came down here and found more students being taught in homeschool, which kind of opened my eyes to the situation. When I went in on voters 18 to get kids to register for school, I could not believe the kids, the children, our students, was asking for a better education. They deserved it. And I'm good, you know? I can talk forever, but I'm good. I'm a teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next, we have Mr. James Adams.
My name is James Adams. I'm the mayor of Mount Vernon, Alabama, and I'm standing before you all today. Didn't come prepared to give a big, lengthy speech or anything like that. I come, I'm going to speak from my heart. I really feel like the school of Belsaw, E.T. Belsaw, wasn't represented well. Parents did on numerous times, they notified people that, look, the teachers are not teaching this, or we don't have ban. They got rid of the athletic courts and stuff like that, and nothing was done about it. Okay, now the kids started, numbers started going down, okay? The reason that's why, because if it was your child in school, you want your child to get the best education he can, one of the best teachers that they can. So after nothing was done, our parents in my vision didn't have a choice but to start moving kids to other schools. That wouldn't have been my choice. I like to tackle a problem. If you've got a problem, let's try to solve the problem. But that wasn't happening because they wasn't getting any results from the other stuff. So the parents started moving them. So when you move kids, what happens to the remainder? The numbers go down. And that's what you all are holling about, the numbers, plus it was a failing school. Okay, if they don't have qualified teachers, and I wasn't out there, wasn't teaching them, but you won't get qualified kids and you won't get good results. Now, they was talking about shutting it down. I am asking that this doesn't happen. I remember when Belsaw was blooming in Mount Vernon as a school. That changed over years because of the problem I'm telling you about, the different principal. And you all know how many principals have been up there. You all know how many teachers you need to send up. But that was a problem with Belsaw, getting certified or qualified principals and teachers. Not saying that they weren't qualified, because I'm not saying... But they kept going in and out, changing out. When you start changing out, that's telling me something. So after they couldn't get athletics, the band, they had one of the best bands in Mobile County. That elementary school, when they was up there, played with the high schools. They played in Malla Grove. They marched with the... All kind of parades. So they had a good core of teachers at that time. For some reason, we lost them. Now, it's sad that the kids are going to suffer with this. I remember riding out through South Corrodan. I saw a groundbreaking service. And so I got curious and went over there. They said, "This is a new middle school." I said, "A middle school? You got Belsaw there. Why would you need a..." But, you know, things had to happen, so... Then that was North Mobile. Years went by, then they said, "Well, your kids eventually going to have to go to North Mobile." I said, "Why? We got Belsaw. A nice school. It's not run down or anything. Can stand with the best you got." So last year, they got rid of all the Miller students. And I have a granddaughter right there. She had the third highest GPA in the eighth grade this year, the other day. She was the top, one of the top honors students there. So you're going to find that in all schools. You know, you're going to find some good ones, some bad ones. My thing is, when you moved all the Miller students to North Mobile, that shown up give way to getting rid of the elementary now. To me, because you built North Mobile, it looked like to me it was a cleverly orchestrated plan. I'm speaking from my heart. It feels like it was a plan, and that plan was going through when it got North Mobile. The students eventually went down. Then you moved the middle school. All you have was elementary. Not only that, they built, and I'm not against anybody getting us new school. I'm not. They built Casa Diva a couple of miles away from us. So when you building new schools around another school, what do we expect? Those kids...
Thank you.
Mr. Adams, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Ms. Carolyn Blanks-Maze.
Yes, I'm Melissa Casita Jackson, and we just want to let you all know, whatever you're doing, whatever decision you think you have made, this is not the end of it. How do you feel, see, it's not any of your children who you want to merge together. How do you feel if your middle school and your high school coming together? Think about that. Think about your grandchildren and teenagers. So we want to let you know that this is not the end, and we are not going to stand by and let you do what you want to do. When you get ready, put your money where you want to put it. You build your new centennial high school, so you want to close Mayne's Middle School in order to fund that big old college. But you can't do that. I see y'all in y'all positions, making your money. But now is time for our people to wake up and stop you closing down every black school, all these schools. Our little children, you don't care about them. Think about your grandchildren. Think about your children. See, you never thought about that. Put your children in that position. So now, how many more minutes I got, Sister Pete? Two more minutes. Okay, I'm going to use my two minutes in the name of Jesus. So we ask God right now. See, I'm talking to Jesus, and I'm going to use my two minutes, Lord. You know what's going on right here. And God, you know, when schools starve back, we demand a new school for Mayne's Middle School. All these years, they've been shutting down our little black children. So God, you know, you made all of us, and you love us all. But God, you don't let that evil, iniquity what people are doing. And God, we ask you right now in the name of Jesus to move for Mayne's Middle School and move for all our schools what we need in the name of Jesus. Amen? And God, you move. You know how to move. See, we don't know how, but we petition it all to you, Lord, right now in the name of Jesus. I understand a one minute, but Jesus has a all minute in the name of Jesus. Amen? And we thank you, Lord. And Lord, whatever you need to do for the school board, Lord, you know how to shut it up in the name of Jesus. You know how to move in it. You know how to move on the board. You know how to church right now in the name of Jesus. Amen? And Lord, we want to give you the honor. We want to give you the praise in the mighty name of Jesus. And you fix it, Lord. Fix it. Fix it. Don't let them sleep tonight. Don't let none of them sleep tonight. Don't let them sleep. Okay, we've been told by some of our black community, you know, don't be talking and loud and all that. Well, see, we ain't them, and we going to say it like, just like we want to say it. And if that bothers them, that's just too bad. If they say we ain't no Christian because we talking what we talking, well, that's just too bad. They told Dr. King he was a devil, so that don't mean nothing, okay? I do know this, and I don't care what, nobody but him said the information that I have, and I got this on legal ground. And so don't tell me I don't know what I'm talking about. All y'all up in the community talking about, we don't know what we talking about. The reason they want to close Mayne's is because it's the whole city plan of the Charsse community. Okay, the Charsse community is going to consist of RV Taylor, Birdsville, and Barkin Tower. Well, who goes to those schools? The people in the project. So they feel like, see, if they can push this Charsse neighborhood through, then they won't need Mayne's. So that's why the city of Mobile, Mayor Stephson and all them got together with y'all in them private meetings, what y'all have out in the country everywhere. Y'all got together and said, "Well, we going to close that down." So now, what you trying to do is carry out what y'all discussed. But don't depend on that that Charsse community going to come to pass, because I got a letter right here from Washington, DC, that the mayor and the city can't even push that community through unless he going to get working approval with the community what they going to do. They not going to just push us out and build no new streets and no new buildings and going to push all them poor black folk out in the street. Not this time. You did it over in Pritchett. You did it over in Happy Hill. You did it over in Orange Grove, and now you about to do it over here. So that's what this Mayne's thing is about. But I want y'all to know, whatever the city you have made, will make, that will not be the end of that. If it take every dollar I got and have saved up, I plan on taking every one of y'all to court about this. Because it's time that the federal government know how y'all been doing us all these years. We, I told y'all before, it's Rosa Parks time. It's time for us to stop paying our money, and we still got to get to the back of the book. In other words, we got to ask Mather, "Mather, if you going to build us a school, if you going to do this, no. No, we not going to do that. Not anymore. I told you everything on the earth goes by season and time. Nothing happens but by season and time. It don't matter if you don't know nobody, don't believe nobody. Everything happens on a season. He may let something go for 70 years, but after that 70 years, he'll cut it down. When God said he got tired of just white folks going in that White House, he said, "I got me somebody now. I don't want just no white folk going up there." And so when Barack Obama started running for office, everybody in Mobile started giddy, 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 giddy. And now he done been in that two-time conference. God got ready for it. And now he ready for the black community to rise up. You know when August coming? You know how to keep your butt cheering at home? You know what to do? They don't taught you what to do. When they died in those streets in the sixties, they taught you what to do. Stand up for yourself, because we not going to stand by and let this happen, and y'all can depend on that.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Mr. Peter Cupfer.
Thank you. Those of you that don't know me, my name is Peter Cupfer. I'm a U.S. Director with the Alabama Education Association, and we do have some concerns as it pertains to transparency. I'm not going to talk any about that, but as it pertains to some budget and fiduciary concerns, we understand the original intent of the legislature was to provide for additional funding, was to provide 4% pay raise for our certified everybody, all or nothing, 4%, and also an allocation... and also an allocation of increased teacher units. But what we've come to understand is there's some concern with teacher certifications. There's the case that a lot of middle school teachers with their 1-6 certificate are being requested by their supervisors to go back to elementary school or obtain a 6-12 or higher certificate. And we certainly would hope that you would acknowledge that the state recognizes their 1-6 certificate and the fact that they can teach for up to two years on emergency status and have that time to obtain a higher certificate if they so chose. That's one concern. And let it be known that from the time of 9th through 12th grade, it is the case nationally, but specifically to Mobile, that a student will have over a year of time with a substitute teacher. So, there is a demand for these increased teacher allocations, and we expect that the board would move to increase teacher allocation units. And we understand that you do have the authority and discretion to have some flexibility with that. But we'd like to see increased teachers. We'd like to see more teachers and more opportunity for teachers to obtain through the district's pay, paying them to get higher certification, if that is the request. But we certainly would not want to see a mandate come that they get a higher certificate when certainly it's not incumbent that they do so as the state recognizes their certificate. So, we come to you with those concerns. We'd like to see some increased communications from the superintendent's office and the administration. I know a lot of the leadership assistant superintendents have been very good about communicating with me, and I thank you for that. When I've asked a question, it has been responded to, Mr. Hacks' office and HR. However, we'd like to see a little more correspondence and cooperation with the superintendent's office and some of the administration as it pertains to academic affairs. Thank you.
Sir, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Lisa Washington.
I don't know if there's anything else left to be said. I commend you. I commend your courage. I commend the fact that you're telling it exactly like it is. And we need to never forget how we made changes in the past because that has not changed in terms of being a successful avenue to continue to make things better for our children. I'm new here. I've only been here a year. I want to say hello to the board. Ms. Peak, I understand you're the first female superintendent here in Mobile and maybe in the state, but...
Not in the state, just Mobile.
Of the state? Wow.
Not in the state.
Not in the state. Okay. But to be the first and to know how important your job is as a woman, as looking in this room and seeing fellow women, there's mostly women in here speaking on the needs for better quality education for our kids. And it just seems to me that every time we have to close down a school, even after we've used that particular school to get $100 million to make improvements. I understand that last year, you yourself and the Board of Health said that Mayne's is not to be torn down, that it is a school that is qualified to be repaired and be rebuilt. And resources need to be put into it to help make it better. We lose good teachers when we have mold and mildew. We lose our babies when we have dilapidated bathrooms, and we go down the hall and we can't even walk safely from one class to the next. We start to lose and we start to disseminate. And it makes me wonder, is it something that has to do with real estate? Is it something that has to do with, okay, in this area, we're underprivileged? We're underrepresented? We are people who can be looked upon as an infestation of roaches. And so, we're gonna stomp us out, take the school, destroy it, and move on? What happens to our babies? We have children who need and deserve that quality education. And I know from mother to mother, grandmother to grandmother, we need to make sure that whatever happens to Mayne's School, whether it's being destroyed, whether it's being refurbished like I thought it was from a year ago, all of a sudden now it's gonna be destroyed. I don't understand how the quality went to the point of that. Is it cheaper? Is it a real estate? I think it's a money thing. It's cheaper to tear it down and leave these families, which is what, less than 400 student population now? 250? One child, one family has to struggle with trying to either relocate, get a bus, go here, go there, instead of staying and dealing with the problem right there at the site and making it happen. We tear it down and spread everybody out and divide us. And I just feel like it's the wrong avenue to take. And I'm sorry if we disagree. But I just feel like if we say we're gonna stick and stay and make the problem no longer a problem, let's do that instead of running or putting the money in a place because it has a higher value, real estate-wise, and not consider our babies. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, I have Willie Ann Law. Ms. Law?
I am a grandmother of a student at Mayne's. My grandson is not emotionally, maturely, ready to be pushed in with a bunch of high school students. I do not want him to be there. He will never go to Williamson in, under these conditions. You know, the school is, I think, is a good school if we can band together and bring the programs there that you have at these other schools. All these other schools have multiple reading enrichment, math, they have bands, they have functioning bathrooms, they have walkways where the cement's not falling from the top. And a lot of them are much older. You know, there was money allocated for Mayne's, for LaFlore, for a couple other schools. And when Murphy sustained some damage, they took it from everybody to fix Murphy because they wanted Murphy fixed, and Murphy fixed right now. Well, Murphy could have tear it down. Let's fix our schools in our neighborhoods. Our kids deserve that. Our kids are worth more than what you can ever imagine. You get, you get people like, Dizzy Galipsy comes from a school like that. You have, you know, there's so much talent, so much knowledge, so much that can happen with those kids if you only put forth an ounce of effort to cure the problem instead of stomping them, killing them, throwing them to the wayside.
Thank you, Ms. Law. Next, Jesse McDaniel.
Good afternoon. As always, it's an honor and privilege to be here today to represent teachers and support staff in the Mobile County Public School System. My name is Jesse McDaniel, and I work with the Alabama Education Association. I rise today to speak about an issue that is probably going to be overlooked, and I didn't want it to be because it's very important. If you have an agenda, it's item G5, the plan, which is what they call the Fund Balance Plan. If you look at that plan, and you look down to the fifth bullet point on that plan, there's something that's really alarming to me as a professional association leader here in this county. And that is the proposal that this school board adopt a plan to actually endorse increasing class sizes. And they would be increasing class sizes by reducing the number of locally funded units beginning this year by 13 teachers. This is being proposed in an effort to save $1 million a year with the promise of more reductions in locally funded units in years to come. Now, you can ask any mother in this room whether or not they think their child's classroom needs to be larger. But I know the answer to that question. You can ask any educator in this room if class sizes need to be larger, and I know the answer. The answer is not to enlarge your class sizes and to lay off teachers. The answer is to reduce class sizes, which is exactly what the Alabama Legislature put in their budget this year for the first time in a long time. 425 additional teachers across this state, many of those will be coming to Mobile County. And so, what this Fund Balance Plan is proposing is to just say, okay, well, the legislature's gonna give us some more teachers, so we're just gonna get rid of some of our local units so that we can save $1 million a year with the promise of more to come in subsequent years. This is absolutely the wrong way to go, and I couldn't just sit here and let that go unchallenged. I mean, somebody needs to be speaking up for these teachers. I'm proud of these community members speaking up for themselves, but the teachers need somebody up here speaking for them. And the answer is not to increase class size by cutting teacher units. You need to be going in the opposite direction, reducing the class size. If we care about education, it is without dispute that a lower number of students in a classroom is important. One final thing, if you look down, board members, to where it says "other suggestions", one of those suggestions is that this board consider outsourcing special education paraprofessional positions to companies like Appleton and other quote-unquote "talent management" companies. I would urge the greatest caution in that consideration because there are a lot of unanswered questions when you want to talk about outsourcing your special ed jobs, jobs for kids who are the least of these in this world? What kind of background checks are these people gonna have? What kind of training will these employees be given? What kind of chain of command is gonna be in place when you have contractors working alongside district employees? How will you recruit and retain quality employees who have no job rights, no security, no benefits, and no opportunity for representation? I would urge the greatest possible caution, board members, in these considerations. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Ms. Betty McShen.
Ms. Shen just asked me to speak on her behalf. My name is Ty Burton. And I do not have children in the Mobile County Public School System. Can y'all hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I do not have children in the Mobile County Public School System. I was actually not even a student of the Mobile County Public School System, although I am from Mobile. But I live on De Soto Drive, directly behind Mayne's Middle School. And currently, I manage one of the largest law firms in Mobile. And I want you to know that if I feel like the children who live on my block are in jeopardy, we are gonna seriously sue you. There's gonna be some real problems. Our community is tired of it, and we're not going to take it anymore. If we have to start a Mobile City School System, that is what we will do. Whatever it is to protect those children and every little Taisha just like me, that's what we're going to do. So, we are here to listen. I would love to hear the conversation about why it's a good idea because currently you have not given any type of notice to our community about it. You do not have the authority to just purge on and do what you want to do without being accountable to us. And we are hereby holding you accountable, and that's it.
Next, Ms. Donna K. Buckley. Ms. Buckley? Last is Ms. Gwen Pugh. Ms. Pugh?
Thank you. I'm Councilwoman Gwen Pugh from Mount Vernon. Did you say I was last?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to share my minutes with a couple of parents here from Belsaw.
You have five minutes.
We'll share five minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
If y'all want to say something, I'll share my minutes with you all. I wrote down what I had to say, so it won't take but a minute. Again, I'm Councilwoman Pugh from Mount Vernon, and I'm here to give a plea. I want to give a plea to you all to give our current principal a chance. There's no elected office that has one year to get things done. There's no elected office that has one year to make any real changes. But since she has been there, we, Belsaw Mount Vernon sits between two multimillion-dollar steel plants, and she has gotten them involved. They have donated funds. They have donated their time. She told me just yesterday, there are probably 40 employees of these plants a week that comes and reads with our children. They want to be a part of our community. Our new principal wants to be a part of our community, but she has not had a chance to become a part of the community and win these students back. Now, we've been here before, about six years ago, and I won't go into the past because I do want to allow this parent to speak, someone that actually has a child there now. But we've been here before, and when we were there before, we had more students. Then we lost our band teacher. First, we lost him part-time, and then we lost him full-time. As one of the other speakers said, who wants their children to go to a school where there is no extracurricular activities? And it's unfair. It's kind of, I don't want to say we were set up to fail. I don't want to say that because I'd like to think, I mean, I see doctor, doctor, superintendent, commissioner, I'd like to think that we were not set up to fail. But everything was taken away from us, and the parents did what parents do. I want the best for my child, so it's just 15 miles away. I'm gonna go to South Coral where there is band teachers and there are extracurricular activities. And our school is on a solid foundation. That school, as someone else stated, looks better than any new school that you have. We have no issues with, that I know of, of any running down of the school other than our numbers. And I feel like that our numbers is a reaction to the curriculum that has left. Thank you for your time. I don't know how many minutes you got.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Chestnain. My son attends... I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Linda Chestnain. My son attends Belsaw Mount Vernon. I would like to express to you that I have seen great improvement with Belsaw since Ms. Corner Walker has been there. I would like you all to reconsider closing the school, giving her opportunity to do what she has set out to do. She's building the children up. They are more enthused to learn, even though it's just the five down, the fifth grade down, yet and still, they are willing. My son comes home every day, Mama, I did this. I made this grade. He's very informed about what he need to do. She's there to help. I made a phone call to her about his grades. She jumped on it right then to make sure it was, you know, what it was. So, and then she encouraged him that he was doing his best because of how the test was set up. But anyway, as a parent, I've been in situations myself where my transportation was broken. I could call a neighbor and say, go pick up my child if they're sick, or... Or... But anyway, please reconsider closing the school. We need our school right there in Mount Vernon. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Excuse me. I know that my name was not called. However, I do have a question. There are some of us out here seated that were here at 12:45, 11:45, excuse me. And several of us, some of us took off from our jobs to have the opportunity to come and address the board on the Mayne's Williamson High School issue. And I'm just needing to ask a question. We want to know, you know, how did... We want to know, you know, how did you select your speakers? Did you choose from a list of people? What was the rationale for the speakers you called? Because there are several of us out here, about six or eight to be exact, who've not had an opportunity to speak, I being one of them, and my name is Linda Wilson. I am a 1969 graduate at Williamson High School, a lifelong member of the Maysville community, and I have some essential questions about this proposed merger regarding Mayeens and Williamson High School, very essential questions. Why was the decision made? We were traumatized on Sunday afternoon at an Alumni Association meeting when we heard the news. Several of us just went into shock, didn't know what to do. When was the decision made? Who was informed? Why weren't the citizens of the Maysville community informed? These are very essential questions that I've not heard an answer to, you know, out of all the rhetoric that's been passed around, no one can answer these questions. I also would like to call your attention to the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966, which authorizes the Secretary of the Interior to maintain a national register of districts, sites, buildings, structures, and objects significant in American history, architecture, archaeology, engineering, and culture. Williamson High School will celebrate the one-hundredth year of its founding this year, and I would say that it represents the hope of the culture in the Maysville community. That is all that some of the people in the community has to look up to, football games, athletic events, community meetings, meeting places, you know. So, we need to be reminded of this Authorization Act, that if we interfere with buildings and structures that have been, the whole Maysville community, by the way, is on the National Historic Register of Historic Places. So, we are not gonna stand by and let you merge Williamson High School. We're not gonna let you stand by and close it. This is all we have to hold on to. This is our pride and joy, and it will be our pride and joy.
All right, Ms. Pugh, we're gonna move forward now with the agenda items.
Action item G1, I ask that you approve the recommendation to close Belsaw Mount Vernon School. We discussed yesterday that there has been a continuing decline in enrollment since 2007. It's eighty-two percent under capacity at this time.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to uphold the superintendent's recommendation for the closing of the Belsaw Mount Vernon School. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Action item G2, I'd ask that you approve the addendum to the Continuous Improvement Plan that was approved on March the 29th to address the academic needs of twelve schools identified as failing schools by the Alabama Accountability Act of 2013. In this addendum, due to the declining enrollment at Mayeens Middle School and is in an effort to provide a comprehensive program which will include additional classes and electives at Williamson High School, we, I'm asking that you approve relocating the Mayeens Middle School students to Williamson High School.
What number is that one?
And it's G2. It's G2 on your computer?
It's G2, sorry. It's on there.
And to establish the program for the middle school students as the Williamson Middle Grades Preparatory Academy. With the combined enrollment, there'll be eight hundred and thirty-seven students. Williamson High School has a capacity of eleven hundred. There will be a dedicated wing for the Middle School Academy and schedules that will accommodate both sets of students. There is, and I want to repeat, there is no plan to close Williamson High School.
Excuse me?
Williamson High School will remain as Williamson High School and will contain middle school grades. I would ask that you approve that.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
There was a motion and a second to approve the superintendent's recommendation of moving Mayeens Middle School to Williamson High School to establish the Middle Grades Preparatory Academy. Any discussion?
Yes, there's some discussion. You know, I've had comments about this, not only during this charade that y'all put in today, but only too because I was only notified about the plans at a meeting on Friday at Murphy High School. I think it's disrespectful to me as a commissioner, I think it's disrespectful to me as a commissioner because I really believe that as an elected official, duly-elected official, that it's my responsibility to talk to and to work with my constituency, to inform them about issues that affect, impact the quality of life for them and for their education. I already knew what y'all were gonna do today because I already know the mindset, but like the lady said earlier, this is not the end. This is not the end. And so on Thursday night at Mayeens Middle School, we're gonna convene a town meeting, and we're gonna get together and we're gonna put together a plan because while there are responsibilities for you to, as a Board Member, I think y'all have disrespected me as a Board Member because when you had, when you had the problem at Denton Middle School, y'all had town meetings with your community so you could discuss the possibility of what was happening. When you had that at Brazier, you had town meetings to deal with that, but I have not been afforded the opportunity as a Commissioner to exercise my duly-elected responsibilities. And like I say, I came here today with the understanding of what position I was in, and I'm not prepared to talk anymore because I know that talking ain't gonna do no good. The superintendent has been on a one-way road to close Mayeens ever since I've been on the Board. She's been on a road to close it because the seven million dollars that was allocated for Mayeens in the 2012 budget has been taken away. There has to be some law that says that equal opportunities in education should be for all students. We got this old slogan out here about it starts with us. Where does it start with us when we see the impact that it has on the African-American student in the Mobile County Public School System? You could do what you want to do today, and I think it's a shame and disrespectful to me as a commissioner, and I applaud my colleagues. But more importantly, though, I'd like to just conclude by saying that I didn't even come here to talk today because I already knew what the deal was. I know what I was gonna do, just like you know what you're gonna do. But at the same time, though, we need to change our slogan about it starts with us instead that it starts with whoever you want to because African-Americans, African-Americans, African-Americans are disproportionately represented in this, in this misrepresenting. So what I have done, I've also made a contact in anticipation of what you were gonna do today. I do have a, I met with Loretta Lynch last week when she was in town, the United States Attorney, attorney, and then I have a direct contact through the Department of Education, and we will be filing a federal complaint alleging that African-American students, because of their race, are being disproportionately impacted about closing schools and that they have been denied participation in programs and school activities as related to federal money being involved. And see, I've been on this board almost two years now, and Ms. Pugh has always been on a one-way road to railroad everything I've done, and I really don't care. And I'm mad today, but I know by raising hell ain't gonna get nothing done today. But I do know one thing, though, this is not the end, and I'm not gonna let it fail. I think this is classic racism. It is classic racism.
Any, any further discussion? I will add, Mr. Battles, I would like to add that Ms. Pugh is an honorable person.
You don't have to explain that to me, Mrs. President, because you're part of it too.
I'm making my statement now.
You're part of it too, so you don't have to explain.
Ms. Battles, I listened to you when you spoke. I would like to say, though, that Ms. Pugh and her staff are honorable people, and they're trying to do what's best for the students in this particular situation. They've all worked hard to do that. I think it's unfair to categorize them in a certain manner as you have done, but that's my feelings about it.
Well, you got a right to express your opinion.
Any further?
I got some further discussion. Although you have a right to express your opinion, I, as an elected official, have a due to authorized right to express mine too. And I am so dissatisfied today because I really feel that the process of, in the Bernadette Davis case that was filed in 1963 specifically outlined, that the reason why it was filed because African-Americans were disproportionately not getting the equal educational opportunities in the school system. You could take Mayeens, and the reason why Mayeens is failing is because ten years in a row, they did nothing to avoid the ill-prepared principals and teachers who came through that school system. And don't sit up here talking about nobody honorable. Ain't no honor in this.
All right, any, Dr. Foster?
Mr. Chairman, this question is not for you, this question is for Mr. Battles. Mr. Battles, you said this was classic racism.
That's what I said, Dr. Foster.
Excuse me just a minute, I haven't finished the question. The question is, you referring to this Board?
That's right, that's right.
Correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right.
That's what I'm referring to, and the superintendent.
We've had a, we've had a motion and a second and discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No, 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 no.
The motion carries. Ms. Pugh?
Action item G, action item G3, I'd ask that you amend...
Please come to order. Please come to order.
Action item G3, I'd ask that you amend Board Policy 5.09. This is to add to this that students receiving attendance on transfers are bound to the school to which they transfer for one year or two semesters.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Off a motion, I approve items three through thirty-four.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve action items G3 through thirty-four. Any discussion?
No discussion, Mr. President, but on item number five, on the plan to rebuild the fund balance, I'd like to register my vote of no. I'll pull item five and just say, three through thirty-four, exclude item five.
Okay, we have a motion.
Excuse me, I failed to ask for two items to be pulled, if I could do that right now, and those are the leader in me, number seventeen and eighteen. We need to do some more work on that, so if we could pull G seventeen and eighteen.
Okay, let my motion exclude items seventeen through, seventeen and eighteen.
Thank you.
Okay, Doc, and we had a, a second?
Second.
All right, make sure I've got this correct, Dr. Crenshaw. You're moving for approval of action items G3 through thirty-four, excluding G seventeen and eighteen was pulled, and also G5.
That's correct.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Pugh, G5, please.
Go back to G5.
G5?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
That was the one we pulled out.
That is the, I'd ask that you approve the plan to rebuild the fund balance to one month's operating funds.
Make a motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve action item G5 to a plan to develop to meet our fund balance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Action item G...
Ms. Chairman, I ask for approval of G35 through G41.
All right, we have a motion to approve action item G35 through forty-one, Mr. Forty-one. Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a second. All right, we have a, a motion to approve thirty-four through forty-one. Is that correct, Mr. Harwell?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Pugh?
Action item H1, I'd ask that you approve out-of-county travel as listed, and that's Consent Agenda Item 1.
Yes, ma'am. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Move to approve one and two under the Consent Agenda.
Very well. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 and 2, out-of-county travel and various bids. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Pugh, Student Expulsion.
I'd like to ask that you approve student expulsions as listed under separate cover 1 through 9.
Is that, I've got eight.
Uh, 1 through 8.
Okay.
Make that motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve student expulsions 1 through 8. Is there a second?
On a second, I just wanted to ask the Board Members to take note of the efforts that were made to get in touch with the parents relative to these student expulsions and the inability for them to respond. I thought that was just real sad, given the magnitude of the seriousness of the infraction. I know it's another thing we're not doing, but it's just, just really sad to say that many of them just not respond to our letter for a hearing.
Dr. Crenshaw, I'm glad you brought that up because I've noticed that at every meeting that we have these, that there's always seems to be a number of them like that, and it saddens me to see that they're not involved in it, so thank you for bringing that up. All right, we, we have a motion to approve action items, I mean, student expulsions, I 1 through 8, and we had, do we have a second on that? I'm sorry.
A second.
Second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Pugh, information?
We present information item 1 through 3. Information 1 is the usual monthly financial statement. 2 is the Mystery Science K through 5 trial that is cost-free, and then purchase orders of $5,000 and over.
I am so happy I know now what Mystery Science K5 Trial is.
Exactly, yes, and it's a free pilot for us to use in that area, so it's good to know that there's no cost associated.
Next, we'll move to, any, any questions about that, gentlemen? All right, next, we'll move to item, any item discussion? Any old business? Any Board Superintendent request?
I just want to remind the Superintendent to look into that library situation at, at Holloway.
Mr. Sheffield has and can share information with you.
And the condition of the transportation facility. I have an opportunity to go over there and see those dilapidated buildings, and it should be something we ought to be able to do to tear those down. They're horrible.
Dr. Crenshaw, which ones are those?
Whistler.
In Whistler?
Right. Yes, sir.
Any other Superintendent requests? Any pending matters? Mr. Attorney, client privileges?
I sent the Board four emails, one, May 17th, May 18th, May 19th, and this morning regarding certain matters for the Board to consider.
Okay, do I hear a motion in this case?
I move that we accept the recommendations of our attorneys.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation of our attorneys in these particular cases. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Pugh, scheduling of meetings. I think I understand from yesterday, all of the, thank you, Ms. Chambers, for getting us up to date. Mr. Hack, you've got some information for us?
Yes, sir. Meeting tomorrow will be canceled. We can cancel it seven days earlier than that.
That was the employee hearing.
Okay.
Excellent, very good. Okay?
The other one next is tomorrow.
Okay, very good.
Tomorrow is canceled, yes.
And while we're on that, I have noticed that many of the, I wanted to bring this up last time, I didn't get a chance to, but many of the hearings that we have scheduled and have... scheduled and have, um, planned to have, Mr. Hack and his department have, um, efficiently and effectively, uh, worked out solutions to those, so that those hearings, uh, were solutions that were acceptable to both the board and to the employees, uh, and that those hearings were not necessary. In addition to that, I'd want to say that the, uh, HR is rounding the corner on, uh, doing the kinds of things that when I was the president a couple of years ago, I wished that HR had done and, oh, I have in the past criticized HR for a variety of things.
No.
This is the, this is the time that I would certainly say that you and the group have done a yeoman's job in that respect, as in the respect of, of settling the kinds of cases that do not really need to come to the board. We appreciate that, Mr. Hack.
Would not be a raise, Mr. Hack.
No, no raises associated with that.
And I'd all also like to concur, Mr. Hack. It seems like we're moving along in a timely manner now, uh, and, uh, I appreciate you and your department's efforts in this.
Um, Mr. Hack, that comes as close to, uh, a C-plus as anybody can get. You'll make it to an A one day.
Every from the top, every to the bottom.
Okay. All right, um, any other discussion about scheduling of meetings?
Uh, the only thing I'd remind you, there's a facility and lean frog presentation on Thursday and then the special call board meeting on, uh, Monday, June the six.
And the lean frog is at ten o'clock, correct?
Ten o'clock, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. We are adjourned.
So we decided, we have a student hearing Friday, uh, Thursday.
Yeah, it's just one day.
We are Bobcat Nation. We are the Signature Academy of Theodore High School.
Hello, I'm Martha Peak, Superintendent of the Mobile County Public Schools. Parental involvement is encouraged and valued in the Mobile County Public Schools. There are many opportunities for parents to be involved through PTA, volunteering in the schools, being active in field trips and booster clubs. We encourage parents to take an active part in the day-to-day education of their children. Parental involvement, it matters in the Mobile County Public Schools.
Here at Citronell High School, our Signature Academy focus is on advanced manufacturing, industry and technology. We're also in the middle of a brand-new building project, which includes the, uh, complete renovation of our career technology building and facility, which will allow us to grow our career tech programs. We are very excited about our, our relationships with our industries along Highway forty-three, which is within our tenant zone, and we look forward to building those relationships as we move forward with our Signature Academy program.
Our career and technical educational program offers advanced manufacturing as our Signature Academy, along with industry and technology academies. All three combined are referred to as the MIT Academies of Citronell High School. Within each academy, we have career path choices for the students to select. Each of these career pathways are based upon rigor, relevance, and relationship in an effort to prepare all of our students for college and careers.
We're a firm believer in, in athletics at, uh, Wildcat Nation, and we just want to make sure that everybody understands that the changes that we're going through, the new school, the new facilities that are going on, that, uh, you know, this is gonna be the place to be. We're really, really extremely excited about the opportunities that we're gonna have here at Citronell.
Hi, I'm Mary Burnett, and this is Eleven Questions with a Teacher. What is the best part of your job? The best part of my job is definitely interacting with the students. I'm also a coach, so I get to interact with, um, young ladies. What is your favorite color? My favorite color is pink. What is my favorite movie of all time? My favorite movies would have to be the Harry Potter series. Mountains or the beach? Totally the beach. Coke or Pepsi? I really enjoy Coke, but if I need a few extra bubbles, I go Pepsi. What do you do on a rainy day? Um, probably watch movies and play with my puppy dog all day.
Why is it, when something happens, it is always you three? Believe me, professor, I've been asking myself the same question for six years.
Alabama or Auburn? Definitely Roll Tide.
Roll Tide, roll!
Walmart or Target? I'm definitely a Target shopper. If you could have lunch with anyone in history, who would it be and where would you eat? With anyone in history, I'd probably say Anne Frank. I would have lunch with Anne Frank and I would take her to Monty's. What was the first concert you ever attended? My first concert I ever attended probably wasn't my first, but the one I can remember right now, I went to the Jonas Brothers concert with all of my sisters. Why did you become a teacher? Because I love making, um, young people proud of themselves by doing the little things, by turning in homework, by acing a test, and the accomplishment that they feel, I feel the same thing.
Our mission at Alma Bryant High School is to unify several communities as one graduating body.
By enhancing the athletic, academic, artistic, and service talents of the students individually and of the school holistically.
Thereby increasing their educational and social experiences, as well as their personal growth.
The school embodies its purpose by promoting academic achievements, career and technical opportunities, and holistic growth through programs such as the Signature Academy of Coastal Studies, wherein students are provided hands-on learning opportunities in the fields of marine science, aquaculture, porticulture, maritime and industrial technologies, and recreation, travel, and tourism.
The overall goal of Alma Bryant High School is to create an exceptional environment that engages, challenges, and supports all students so that they may thrive.
And achieve their academic potential every year while preparing them to pursue college and career readiness opportunities.
At Alma Bryant High School, we are creating a culture of higher learning, higher standards, and higher expectations.
What is the best part of your job? The best part of my job is seeing that light bulb go off in my students' eyes and just feeling that and seeing when they grasp a concept that I've worked hard to teach them. What was the last book you read? I just completed my master's in school counseling, and so I let, uh, read a lot of graduate school books, but one of my favorite was What Color Is Your Parachute? It's a phenomenal book about finding a job in today's market. What is your favorite food? Sugar Rush Donuts. I could eat them all day, every day, twenty-four hours a day. Mountains or the beach? For sure, the mountains. Uh, I burn very easily, so the beach is not my favorite place. What is your favorite color? Green, of course.
I know how to spell green, G-R-E-E-N.
Summer or winter? For sure, winter, because I do not like to sweat.
I'm Mister White Christmas. I'm Mister Snow. I'm Mister Iceeckaw. I'm Mister Tinmellow.
Alabama or Auburn? Auburn, for sure. My great, my great uncle played football there for Auburn, so of course I'm an Auburn fan. Do you have any hidden talents? If you could have lunch with anyone in history, who would it be and where would you eat? Anyone in history. I'd have to say George Washington, and I would take him to Sugar Rush Donuts. What was the first concert you ever attended? Paula Abdul, loved it, my very first one, and my dad took all four girls. Why did you become a teacher? I want to make a difference. I want to see the world change in good ways, and I think doing, you can do that a lot as a teacher, you can affect people for sure. This has been Eleven Questions with Heather Weaver, a teacher.
As time passes, we recognize achievements, quality, commitment, and excellence in our lives. These factors are elevated and are called traditions. Since its inception in nineteen fifty-three, Mattie Thomas Blunt High School has developed a rich and lasting tradition for educating successful students. The alumni of Blunt view their traditions as a true accomplishment, not resting on the past, but ever-flowing throughout many years of academic success, which can be explored, developed, and nurtured. Now begins a new era in education, not a change in education, but an extension of the Blunt tradition. This era began in August two thousand thirteen, when the healthcare access Signature Academy process was introduced to students, parents, businesses, and the waiting community.
As part of the rigorous curriculum through the academies at Mattie T. Blunt High School, our students will gain college and career opportunities. Our partnerships with local employers strengthen the relationship between school and work, thus providing students with job training, internship, and leadership opportunities. Additionally, students may gain college credit, paid internship, and industry-recognized credentials.
Health science is not only one of the fastest-growing fields in today's economy, but one in which graduates are virtually assured employment. Qualified candidates at all levels are in demand nationwide. At Infirmary Health, we provide a realistic, hands-on learning environment to support the needs of a growing global economy. In addition, Blunt can boast of its business, marketing, and human services academies, as well as the industry curriculum taught at Faulkner Career Tech Center.
Developing well-rounded students is very important. Through sports and other extracurricular activities that we offer, we will prepare our students intellectually, academically, and socially. We are indeed proud of everything that we have to offer here at Blunt High School and of every student who chooses to enter our doors.
Last year, the class of two thousand fifteen earned over ninety-seven million dollars in scholarships, and the class of two thousand sixteen is already on its way.
James Walden, Jackson State University.
Kennedy Gooden, Troy University.
Ann Marie Thornton, Alabama.
Because one out of every three MCPSS students goes on to college with at least one scholarship in hand, no matter where they go.
Go Blazers.
Go Bulldogs.
Go Jags.
Roll Tide.
Go Badgers.
Southern Miss to the top.
It began with Mobile County Public Schools, graduating students who are college and career-ready. It starts with us.
Welcome to B.C. Rain High School, where we believe in preparing students to be college and career-ready. Our mission is to provide all students with a rigorous and relevant, hands-on educational experience that will foster lifelong learners. We are proud of our academic rigor and real-world connections in which our students are engaged at all levels, including our Signature Academy of Aviation and Aerospace. Within our school, we believe it is important for our students to be well-rounded and excel not only academically, but socially. Our students practice the essential skills necessary for success within a college atmosphere or a workforce environment. Education is more than information found in textbooks. Education is exploration, experiences, and invaluable opportunities to growth. B.C. Rain nourishes students within a small learning community, which is a supportive and student-centered learning environment. We offer students the chance to realize their untapped potential. You possess more than you think. I hope you see the opportunities B.C. Rain has to offer. I look forward to seeing you during your campus visit. Remember, education is the key to your future.
For more information on the opportunities B.C. Rain can offer you, call two-five-one-two-two-one-three-two-three-three.